Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Cleveland Heights City Council to order. Addie, please take the role.
Cobb.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Posh.
Sheets.
Here.
And Councilor Posh is excused this evening. I want to start out with a very, very happy statement. And I want to introduce our newest council member, Zenobia Sheets. She was sworn in at 5:30 PM today by Representative Juanita Brent. And a lot of pictures were taken, so we'll have, we'll be able to see all the excitement, yes. Councilor Sheets, would you like to share a few words with us?
I would like to express gratitude for the opportunity just to be able to serve on the committee. Even if it's for a short term, I would like to thank you all again for, you know, being able to allow me the experience and the, you know, the reach to be able to reach out to your kids in husband helping the youth departments. So that's my, my words.
Yeah, so glad you're here.
Absolutely.
I, I'm not making any committee assignment changes because I need to talk to Vice President Russell about what you think could be the best places for you to be able to add to our committees because we are an active committee group, so. And I want you to fit in wherever it looks like you're going to be the best, best addition. So I'm holding off on that until next town meeting.
Okay.
We have a presentation from the Noel Merchants, and Myra Ornstein is presenting to us.
I know.
Everybody came in all at once. You have 10 minutes, Myra, so.
Oh, we got it. No, no worries.
Okay.
To be able to use the arrows to the right, up or down. Um, I think it's the right one, actually. It's the left?
Right and left. All right. So right is the next one.
Well, it's not. Good evening, this today are Ann Councilwoman and Councilperson of anyone around. We have been working on this, Councilwoman Russell and I, for five years. I mean, think about this, five years, you could have put a kid in kindergarten by now. Five years is a long time, but during that time, we also were faced with COVID. So after COVID, as you know, the city got powerful friends. And what we're going to show in this PowerPoint is basically what we're doing now with Noble, what we hope to achieve with Noble, and hopefully to support us. And now I'm going to try to use the arrows.
Myra, I need to ask you to speak up a bit for me, please.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. Be loud.
Okay, so this is the agenda, and this is what we're planning to cover.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, just wanted to ask, is there anyone else here with you tonight that you want to?
Yes, I am. She's.
Okay, I didn't know if anyone else was in the room.
Well, there's several of us here and. Yes, and so she's going to be speaking right after I finish the PowerPoint. Actually, she's taking over the rest of the presentation. Okay, so we talked about whether we should do a merchants association or a CID. And it was determined by the merchants on Noble that it's premature to do a CID. And so technically, this is what a merchants association is. We are not the kind of merchants association that malls have by any means. We are a merchants association that's looking to transform Noble completely. So it's more of a transformation committee than it is a merchants association. So what we want to do is concentrate on the commercial corridor of Noble and create a coordinated strategy for economic growth. Unfortunately, because Noble's been overlooked over the years, there's a lot of things that are missing from Noble that are part of the community in each of the CIDs. So if you look at this list, we have a lot of vacant storefronts, we have a lack of merchant mix. Most of the merchants on Noble are barber shops, nail salons, a couple of tattoo parlors. So it isn't the kind of merchant mix that someone from any other part of Cleveland Heights or necessarily Cuyahoga County would be going to visit. And what we're trying to do is transform that. If you think of what has happened with Tremont or Ohio City and how they got started, they started the same way. It took an impetus in Tremont for Michael Simon to move in to get all these other restaurants there. So that's what we want to do in Noble. There's unattended green space. I can't imagine how many times the merchants have said to me they have two-foot weeds in front of their stores. That's just not okay. It's got a reputation for being crime-ridden. Whether this is realistic or not, that's the reputation on every other part of Cleveland Heights. There's a lack of foot, foot traffic because of that and because of all of the other bullet points here. And there's no marketing, there's no promotion, nothing else. So what I did was a comparison between the other CIDs and what's happening on Noble. Now, you'll see that we're calling it NABA. We've decided that there's such a negative connotation with Noble that we wanted to transform the name. So Tevita, in one of her meetings, said to them, okay, this is your homework. We want you to name what this business association is going to be called. And they said Noble Area Business Association. Now, I'm a marketing person. I have nightmares about how I go into a logo that says Noble Area Business Association. And then I had a thought that we would do it NABA. Now, NABA, if you think of it, Soho in New York, NOLA in New Orleans, got a great kind of feel to it, right? So if people start thinking about Noble as NABA, suddenly we have more enthusiasm and we have a whole different outlook. And we're starting from scratch, which is exactly what we wanted. So I know that Economic Development had done a survey, I haven't seen the whole survey, but I know that part of what we discussed when we were talking about it. Well, all of these things that make Noble a community, that make all of these districts a community. Now, look at where everybody else stands and then look at NABA. We have nothing. We have no bank, we have no drugstore, we have no, well, we have a supermarket, but. Um, I thought after going to say a lot was that the off-brands are embarrassed to be on the shelves there, okay? Um, there's no dry cleaner, there's no coffee shop, so this could go on and on. Again, contracted landscaping, every CID has. Contracted snowplowing, every CID has that. Contracted watering for the landscaping, every CID has that. CPA available? Yeah, of course. Public parking? There's no parking on Noble. There's nothing. Look at how this matches up. Look at where the longest district is, look at the amount of money we're asking for. Look at Cedar Lee, look at Cedar Fairmount, look at Coventry, Quarter Mile, I was their executive director. Look at the number there, look at what we're asking for here. Nothing in comparison. There was supposed to be $900,000. Keep that money in mind. $900,000 was supposed to be spent between Noble and Taylor, and South Taylor. That's what we ended up with. Okay. The 318 was because we were in a meeting and it was told to us when we added up the numbers, all of us aren't really good at math, that it was 318, but it was supposed to be 305. So we're asking for 305,000, almost 306. Um, Tevita had worked out something with the county that we were able to present to them and get seed money. We got $10,000 from our fund, we were able to hire an attorney. That's all the money we have right now. So here's where we are. We have the $10,000 from the county, we have a board of directors. We're asking for, again, it's 306. We need money from the city in order to keep going. We can, after we become a 501(c)(3), which we're expediting that process, apply for grants. Because Noble is an underserved community, I'm really confident we'll get grants. This is a budget which you can't really see here, but I hope you received a copy of it. Okay, we have 80 merchants on Noble, give a take. Um, we already have the board of directors, we already did the budget for three years. And we need the money. We need the money to hire CPA, we need the money to pay me, I've been doing a gratis. Um, we need a purification program. We need, tonight, tonight, we need this to pass because we can't get a snowplowing budget unless we sign now. We already have the budget, we need the contract. We can't sign a contract unless we sign tonight. So I hope you will pass this as an emergency measure. Okay, so everything I've been talking about is that we want to collaborate, we want to make it a diverse community, we want to attract more people, we want Noble to be a community. And it deserves to be a community, and it's been overlooked as a community. So that's what we're asking. Here's what we're looking for. We think it's a win-win for the county, for the city, for the merchants. We have the county funds. The first thing they asked us after they gave us the funds, which by the way, took about 10 minutes for them to grant that to us, we need the money for the city. And they said, how much is the city giving you? And we said, don't know. So here we are. Okay, so NABA is defined as from the Auto Zone on Mayfield all the way down Noble. So we're looking at a corridor that starts on Mayfield, goes all the way down Noble. This is what we've accomplished to date. We have a board of directors, I'm the executive director. We are establishing a full board of directors, which right now, we have, we had an executive board before. Um, we are creating a nonprofit in the state of Ohio. Um, we're going for 501(c)(3) status. Um, the state of Ohio has already granted us nonprofit status that really doesn't get us very far. We can't get grants with the state of Ohio, man. Um, so we are hoping to plan events. We are hoping to plan attract pop-ups so that they will lease space when they see that we're driving people there. We are looking to get restaurants, art galleries, anything that we can do to make this a thriving neighborhood. And that's my part of the presentation, but now I am turning it over to Jackie Remmer.
Okay, let's see how quickly I can spill through this so my words can jump by, I apologize. We do have some other members of the board that are here with us. We have Mrs. Robinson from Pads, who runs her nonprofit on Noble. Uh, we have Ms. Mohammed who has her salon on Noble, and Mr. Miles from State Farm on Mayfield. Uh, my name is Jacqueline Remmer, I am a Monticello homeowner and my business is on Noble Road. I have an embroidery shop that many of you have been at before. Um, I am one of the 80 merchants in the Noble Mayfield area and one of the fourth or fifth business owners that has taken on this endeavor of starting this much-needed business association. We of a city have had so many conversations about Noble and what to do with it, but I feel like we're never going to get very far. Why? Because these conversations happen in circles around each other instead of with each other. Just in the last few months, I can't tell you how many times I've heard, well, didn't somebody get this allocated? Or wasn't this group working on XYZ? I said, well, it sure would be nice if these people would be at the table together and having these conversations. And that's what we need more of, more true collaboration, better communication, and transparency. So what is this business association going to do? It's going to be the collective that's going to give us a seat at this table. It's going to allow the current merchants to be a part of the conversation. The voice that can actually speak to the challenges faced by the businesses in a highly marginalized area. What we want to do is to do our part to make the Noble, to make Noble a vibrant area that people actually want to stop. No more speeding through just to get to neighboring suburbs. No more of the need to head to the other neighborhoods to relax, dine, or shop. Because you'll be able to do that right here in Noble, where you live. With the right marketing promotion, we can make that happen, but other changes need to happen too. Let the business owners work with planning and development on the streets gate. Let the business owners work with economic and business development to bring in other businesses to mix up the merchant mix to bring more dollars into the Noble area. Let us work with local banks, bring in the SBD, uh, small business development center, I abbreviated that for myself, and some venture capital specialists not only bring businesses here, but to keep businesses here. Let's put the glass slipper on Noble and let this be a Cinderella story. This can be the beginning of a transformation that everybody knows is necessary, but that no one has actually taken the first step. Someone has to put money in the pot first. The Noble area businesses aren't just asking for a handout, we're ready to do the work. We have the opportunity right now to get a snowplowing contract in place while we put out other financial and budgetary items with the city, trying to figure that out. But we're ready to work with whatever version of the council that we might end up with. And the fact of the matter is, I'm probably still looking at the majority of the leaders that will be in place after the election. One of you will be the mayor, and there might be a new face or two in the mix. But before then, you have an opportunity to work together now. There's really no need to wait. A win is a win, not just for Noble, not for any particular candidate, but for Cleveland Heights. Let's show the city now that this particular council can still work together. So let's, tonight, approve tonight's legislation regarding the funding, funding for the Noble Area Business Association effective immediately as an emergency measure.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Maddox has a quick question, then we have to move on.
Actually, she actually answered it, I think.
See how well you did, yeah, see how well you did. You anticipated this question. All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Great job, ladies.
Rand Anderson has a couple of words to say to us.
Um, just a quick comment about Lanch Avenue. And there was a story on Cleveland.com that didn't entirely get the facts correct. So we're kind of, we were going to give an update anyway, but we wanted also just to correct the record. So on Friday, we did issue a notice of intent to request release of funds. This is kind of a procedural bureaucratic step in the process to access the HUD grant dollars that we did receive previously. And as part of that, um, we had to do an environmental review, which has also been posted as well online. There's a comment period, this is all on the city's website. Um, and all of this is done as part of the process to access, again, those HUD grant dollars so that we would be able to use those for soft costs as we do continue to look at this project, look at the planning for it, the engineering. Uh, so no decisions have been made as far as what the project is or if and when it moves forward, but this is just a step in the process to be able to access, to access those funds so we can do those planning steps.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the clarification. Um, we're headed into executive session now, so I do need a motion.
Yes, I'd like, if I may, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to A, consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee, and B, to consider the sale or lease of city-owned real property.
Second.
Um, Addie will take the role call, please.
Cobb.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Sheets.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Since we're on the air, Matt has one question. Since we're on the air. Uh, I would like for us to put together a, maybe another meeting, I don't know if it would be an executive session or not, but to talk about how we, um, give out funds. I think you had brought it up once before.
Yes, for grants, yeah.
For grants or different things of how we are going to utilize and do that and come up with a procedure for that.
And actually, it's been discussed at the committee level, the finance committee level, so. This is something that we need to follow up on.
I think some type of process needs to be put in place as well.
Madam President, I may be incorrect, but I, I'm not sure you announced returning back at 6:50 from executive session.
We just returned back from executive session at 6:50. Thank you, Director Hannah. Appreciate it. Yes.
And it was previously.
Yeah, yeah. And we were kind of, we had some examples of grants and request formats that they could use, so.
I'll talk to, getting more of that.
Yeah.
They'll say we're not a bank.
All right. Legislative review, so just give me a second so I can get my computer open, please. And.
I have a question about that to the mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Have you received, council's still receiving requests from some nonprofit organizations for projects. Has the administration received any additional requests? Uh, we're, we're talking about nonprofits coming for funds for things. Have you seen that over the last?
I can't think of one.
That's, okay, then.
Right, that's good. We've got some time here.
We're headed into exec, into legislative review at this point. And we're going to be looking at, the first ordinance up for discussion is ordinance number 208-2025. And these are all under the category, consideration of adoption requested. And this one is an ordinance to amend certain sub- paragraphs of ordinance number 011-2025 relating to appropriations and other expenditures of the city of Cleveland Heights, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025. Um, this is the request from
Just the police.
Chief Britton for the locker room additional monies that need to be spent. And we do have commitment from the finance department as to the fund that that's going to come from. Are there, the, um, funds are going to come from budget, from fund 402, unencumbered cash. So the funds are there for this particular legislation. Is there any other question on this? Vice President Russell.
Uh, yes, I had a couple of questions. Uh, are there any, are there any alternative solutions or phases, options that could reduce the price of the project? Mayor Kuta.
So Administrator Dumas did go and actually inspect this, do you want to speak on that?
So the original capital project was the installation of new lockers inside of their, um, inside of their locker room where they change their clothes and all of that. When the lockers were removed, there's a large amount of black mold. And the black mold has always been apparent outside of the lockers and inside their shower rooms and their bathroom. The black mold, besides being a health issue, is an issue for them in terms of what they wear. There's a ventilation system that goes inside of a locker, and that ventilation system is clouded with black mold. And that goes back to the HVAC. So when you visit the locker room, they actually have, I shouldn't say this, but they actually have their vest hanging on the outside and their shoes kind of on top of the locker. It's very, because they don't want the mold to settle inside of their vest.
Right.
So I did take engineering with me, um, some people that would, uh, understand that process and give a better pricing because Mayor wanted a little more detail on it before we do it. So it is an HVC renovation, and the locker project is on hold at this point because without that changing and fixing the black mold issue and the ventilation inside the lockers and the bathrooms, they can't move forward on the project.
If I'm not mistaken, that's Pensica is the, yeah. And I actually asked a couple of people from Leopardo to go take a look just to, just to get a second opinion. And they completely agreed that this needed to be done and that the price was reasonable.
Councilor Maddox.
I'm only asking this just because I'm looking at you. Is this, is this an issue in the fire department's locker room as well? Showers, anything?
We had a black mold problem in our training room. It's been abated. We still have some cosmetic repairs to make after the abatement, but not, not so much in the locker room at the moment.
Okay. Yeah, I had to ask it.
Oh, I have a question. The Leopardo project is supposed to, like with the new HVAC, will that help the venting down there so this won't happen again? This project, I don't know about the Leopardo. I don't think they have a, an additional process for this particular project. But this will be corrected through the HVAC correction. And through the, and through removing that black mold chemically. They have sealing things where the mold is coming through, so all those vents will be removed and they'll be removed out of the bathrooms, so. Great, thank you.
Councilor Cobb.
Sure.
Chief, can you give us an update on the kitchens and the fire stations?
So one of the things on our legislation for tonight was the, uh, signing of the contract to have the design, the draft designs done, so we can move forward on that. And then we can start the process and as soon as they have their contract, they'll do their design. This is pretty much bread and butter for them, and then they'll administer the, um, the bid specifications and materials lists.
All right. I see equipment, but I don't see that. Did I overlook it?
The, so what we would be looking at for the, I don't believe it's on the agenda for tonight, but it will be on for the next council meeting because we needed to follow up with Administrator Dumas about this. We'd basically be looking at another construction manager-type contract, like we're doing with the locker rooms. And so we'll need council authorization to select, I believe, uh, Pensica has also been in contact with the fire department about that. So it'll be a process of getting those design costs locked down, figuring out what the guaranteed maximum price estimate will be, locking in a contract for the guaranteed maximum price, and then also proceeding in accordance with the codified ordinances that address the construction manager contracts.
Do we know what happened in the money we previously allocated for the kitchens? Is it just sitting there?
Yeah, that's.
It should still be budgeted.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry to bring this back up again, but I recall a conversation that we had. This may have been a year or two ago, where there was possibly black mold in the service station as well. I, I know when I worked there, they had showers and things. Is there any other situation like that in the HVAC systems, you know, on any of our facilities that that's an issue? Is there, I know this is the third time I'm hearing of it in one of the buildings, I'm just wondering, this is something that's broader that.
I don't actually know that answer. I will start visiting some of the facilities once we're past the budget.
Yeah.
Um, I'll start visiting some of them. There's not been that conversation in the executive staff meeting with the chiefs and directors with, other than the police and fighters.
And I, and I appreciate that. The only reason I'm asking you to have that tonight is we're thinking about the budget. If that's something we need to invest in now, because I, I don't think that's something we need to wait two or three years to invest in. So if there is something that we need, that's emergent, I just wanted to make sure that we had that. So i- in your talks with the directors, I mean, if they're noticing anything like that from a safety risk that we need to handle and budget for now, whether it's from their breathing on down materials or whatever's happening, that, that would be absolutely helpful to know. Um, because in, in my opinion, I'm sure in theirs, that's, that's something we want to move to the top of the list to just know from, from any of you guys.
I will source that information from that, if you're right.
Yes.
Just real quickly, the service center, you know, with Superior behind the Honda, that service. That, that is, uh, one of the things Leopardo's working on is getting that ventilated, that, that, so that is part of what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, you know, whether that will solve all the problems in all the buildings, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
But at least it's, I know that's a really big thing there, and that, that place stunk to high heaven.
Yeah.
If you had to work in that, so they're, that's, that's a major improvement that's being made.
Chief, Mary, did you have anything you wanted to contribute?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, I had planned to, as Mayor Kuta and Administrator Dumas had just walked in the door, um, and they're getting situated in the budget processes in full force. Uh, I was going to request our emergency power generator replacement at Station 2. And since we're tossing that around, that, that's like one of the top priorities for us. It has failed twice in the last three years. We have fantastic mechanics who have gotten it up and running, but it's 43 years old and they no longer make parts for it. So we would also like to move that outside because we want to make room for the, uh, detox units that are in there. So we would need to pour a concrete pad, replace the generator, possibly do some wiring updates from the generator to the panels.
That's exactly, thank you.
So we'll be looking for that coming through.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Petrus, did you have something?
No.
Vice President Russell, real quick.
What's the, what's the completion timeline for it?
For the generator?
For the police lockers. For the police lockers. They were, uh, they were supposed to start on the 14th of this month, but because we had to get permission. So now it's going to be early November that they start.
And Chief Britton advised me today that it's going to take a couple of months.
Okay.
Because it has to be done absolutely correctly.
Will there be any additional maintenance or utilities, um, after the completion of it, of the locker and everything that's going on? If there is additional, um, maintenance, it should be on the efficiency side. Because of the work that they're doing, as opposed to costing more. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Maddox, we really need to move on.
I'm so sorry. I'm going back to you just for two seconds. If, if there's something as you're looking at that in that replacement, if it's something that you see now that's going to save us time or that you know is going to take forever to get shipped or anything, would you let us know? We were doing the budget process. I know that came up with some of the cruisers that even though we wanted to wait to do the purchase, like we found five or six. So if there's something like that that we need to know, please let us know. I don't want to put something off if you need to order it this year to have me in, if that's something like that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move on to the next one, please. Resolution 209-2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Vascals Sports Contractors for the Kane Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Project, waiving competitive bidding. So, um, does anybody have any questions or comments? Vice President Russell.
Uh, what's the lifespan of the surfacing for the tennis court?
Uh what's the lifespan of the surfacing for the tennis court?
It lasts us about seven to ten years.
Seven to ten years? Um is there a warranty for the cracking of the resurfacing?
Yeah, they'll they'll warrant it for that for that year.
For one year?
One year, yeah.
Is there, what what is the plans after that one year? As far as maintaining the, we would have to do that on our own?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, do you know what the projected cost to maintain it annually would be?
Um well, it's basically, it's just a cleaning of it. So we do power washing. So it's it's what we do in-house. So it's nothing, nothing that we do out external that'll cost us any additional dollars. So the main maintenance of it is just basically in-house is the is cleaning, power washing, wiping it out, making sure it's up to speed. Um now this is like I said, some this is about seven to ten years, which is just an overlay of it. Um you start getting into what we did at Dennison this year, which is a complete tear out and replacement. That's like a twenty to thirty year lifespan, but that's you know, that that one court alone is about two hundred ninety thousand dollars. So.
Anybody else?
What is the measures we'll take to uh address the known issues of cracking reappearing maintenance in the disclaimer?
Well, they they won't, they won't guarantee anything because the cracks already exist.
Oh.
So it this is this is a crack, they're they're gonna fill the cracks. And then they're going to put what's what's called like a fabric over top of the cracks. And then they put their coating over top of the of of the entire court. So it gives it a brand new look, but unfortunately the cracks still exist. The only way that you're gonna get rid of the cracks if you do a complete replacement of the courts.
Oh, okay. The lines and everything are going to remain the same? Any upgrades on that?
It's it's a complete resurfacing of it. So it's gonna give it a a brand new look.
Mm-hmm, okay, alright.
Going to move on. Ordinance number twenty, excuse me, two ten dash twenty twenty five. And ordinance amending ordinance number zero two three dash twenty twenty five. Quote, and ordinance establishing salary schedules, position classifications and other compensation and benefits for officers and employees of the city. Unquote, to rename the position of quote director employee resources. Unquote, as director quote director human resources, unquote. And to change quote assistant director employee resources. Unquote, to quote assistant director human resources, unquote. I'm gonna let Council Maddox read the next one. You have anything you want to say about that?
No, I just, it's important. I think council thought it was important that, you know, enough to to change it in the charter and. You know, over four hundred employees and no HR director, it's you know, this kind of was a no brainer. And I'm glad that, you know, I want to say Chelsea's been doing a lot of work on this particular issue and a big help. Um we're making progress.
Any questions? Just a reminder, what was the, cause that we just they we that ordinance was changed in twenty twenty five. Ordinance number twenty three, what what was the reasoning for? Anybody remember? For the employment uh resource versus uh human director of human resources?
Where some of the classifications changed?
Yeah, I think it's it was really principally a title change.
Yeah.
And I don't I don't know, we may have looked and verified that it that that name change that occurred just earlier this year. I'm not sure about that. But um this would just change it, I guess, back that.
Change it back, yeah, cause it was it was done in uh ordinance twenty three twenty twenty five. And ordinance one eleven twenty twenty five.
Probably.
Yeah, certainly in there, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Will there be any uh change in salary range or uh benefits or anything like that?
Not as a result of this.
Okay, this is just name change. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to ordinance two eleven dash twenty twenty five. Resolution authorizing the purchase of one twenty twenty six Ford F two fifty fire command vehicle. And one twenty twenty six Ford hybrid police interceptor utility vehicle from Ken Ganley Ford Inc. Waiving competitive bidding. Does anybody make one to comment? Chief Harry, you want to comment on this?
Sure, this uh this is something that we had processed through the budget in the last cycle. This allows us to, we kill two birds with one stone. We replace our fire command vehicle as part of our vehicle replacement plan. And also that will cycle the current fire command vehicle to replace our utility vehicle slash snow plow. This is kind of important. We have no um pickup truck to pick up our equipment, shuttle things back and forth. And also plow snow on our lot if need be. And also we use that to clear out people's driveways when we're bringing patients out in snowstorms and sometimes even to plow a side street. When, you know, our plow trucks do a great job, but sometimes it's, you know, there's press for staff in in emergency situations. This is how we'll get down a side street uh and get somebody out to the hospital or whatnot. Um the passenger vehicle will cycle into uh the command staff. And then also current command staff vehicle will cycle to the vehicle pool. We do have some uh staffing changes that we need to update.
So you're repurposing and.
As we do, yes. Yes, sir.
Do you need to replace the uh, you've got a a darker red uh Ford Explorer there.
Mm-hmm.
Few years older than most of the police cruisers we have on the road. I've just I've been noticing for a while. I don't know if the inspector has it or who, but is that something we need to take a look at?
We have uh one that needs to cycle out. And then um we do have a new staffing position. We do have a second fire prevention officer, finally, after twenty something years. We're back to where we should be. Um so we do have to outfit that and um I'll be requesting some more coming couple.
I was wondering, cause it was the same age as my wife, so that's gotta have over a hundred some thousand miles on it. So I was just.
One has to come off the road immediately and then two are getting there.
Okay, thanks. I just saw it the other day. I was like, holy smokes.
So you're, so actually, I'm sorry.
Vice President Russell.
So actually you don't have any backup?
Well, we have um a sedan that's was supposed to be taken out of service. Yeah, that. And then uh the one interceptor explorer is that that has to come out of service. And then we do have two station vehicles. Those are things that have been rotated into the past, from the past into station use now. And uh those are aging quickly. Nothing lasts in Cleveland, right?
It's something you need to do.
Yeah, that's okay. I was wondering, we we said so much time on the police fleet. I was wondering, as I say, you guys, I know we talked about the trucks and the ambulance, but not really your vehicles.
Right.
I appreciate that.
We focused on the emergency vehicles, um which was very, very sorely needed. Um and uh we we do have two new ambulances on the way, a re-chassis, a new engine. And uh we'll address these and then we'll be in real good shape finally.
Great, glad to hear it. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next one. Resolution two thirteen dash twenty twenty five. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education. City of University Heights for access to the swimming pool located at the C H U H High School building. And providing terms and conditions applicable applicable to such and declaring emergency. Mayor Kuda, you want to address this briefly?
Uh you know, I had a conversation that was a, I don't remember if it was a Zoom with uh Dr. Kirby from the schools, uh maybe three weeks ago. And uh you know, we moved from there to uh conversation with Mr. Gomato. Who's Parks and Rec kind of counterpart for the schools. And spoke with Mayor Brennan and of course, everybody was like, yes, I mean, come on, let's get going. And uh the law department worked out, our lawyer works with, I'm sorry, who's the other, your counterpart?
Uh David Seed.
David Seed, uh with the school district and they ironed out a pretty nice contract that it gets us started. I I'll have a little bit more to say about it, you know, later. I mean, if there's any questions you have for me now, though, I'll be glad to answer them.
Council Petras.
Um one of the topics that we talked about related to the pool was insurance. And so are we going to have to contribute something to cover any portion of an insurance policy?
So each each of the parties, uh cause it's now a three-way agreement. Um provides to each of the others a copy of or a certificate of insurance, um evidencing their insurance as as a criteria here. And naming the other parties as an additional insured. So it's uh sort of comprehensive of each party.
Council.
Is that going to affect our premiums?
Uh apparently not. Okay, that's what we're hearing.
Council Maddox.
My my question is, cause I know we were, not we, I mean, this pause that I'm sorry, the council was working on this on legislation already around this. And I thought that the, was there an outside attorney reviewing something? We were working on a piece of legislation prior to this.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to figure out exactly. Or if this is the legislation that we already had, like. Cause I'm I I was kind of hearing that there was already legislation in play for the pool. So that's what I was trying to figure out because. I I thought it was referred to an outside attorney or something. So I just I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing two things at the same time.
That's correct. I've been writing and working on that legislation for almost three years. So I did the legislation regarding the um. The funding for the lifeguards and then Bill and I were working on legislation to get into the pool. For the city could get into the pools. And at the time, it became a conflict and that legislation was referred to.
Steve Byron.
To Steve Byron.
So the the what we talked about was strictly for the lifeguards and then the pool, the legisla- so it would have been two separate pieces.
I had two separate pieces of legislation that I actually written and wrote and.
I thought the lifeguard legislation included accessing that legislation from there.
Nope, the second legislation was just what we're doing now to get that going. And that was, I've been working on that and writing it for three years. Yes. And uh so it went into an outside attorney.
Luckily, there's nobody to have to go around now. We can just, so now we don't have to go around anybody. We can just work together.
Well, yes, I but I'd just like to thank you, the appreciation for recognizing that I have been working on that legislation for three years.
I just, I didn't want anybody to murder me because I know uh we had conversations in Parks and Rec and I know Adam Adam Deuce behind me as well. And so I just wanted to make sure I got clarification on what you guys were working on. Cause I know it was presented as well. And so I just wanted to make sure that it didn't go anywhere. Um will this include, so we are we covered with the lifeguards? I guess is my next question now.
Lifeguards was passed a long time ago.
Oh, so we don't have to worry about that in terms of this at all?
No, this the uh the legislation, the additional legislation I was working on was trying to get access to the pools.
Okay.
The other one was to fund it.
We don't need to cover that legislation in addition to this.
Well, I don't know if we, if if any of the legislation that I was written is in parts of some of this or this is all new that's been written.
This is new and I don't know what happened after that went to Steve because the point was for us to not be involved in that. But I'm not aware that anything ever came back.
Right, but you are aware that I've been writing, I've wrote the legislation for three and I've been working on that for three years.
And uh I was just gonna mention that the, or maybe you were gonna get into this later. There's a partial reimbursement for the city's cost of providing lifeguards, which is from University Heights. Um they'll reimburse uh twenty five percent of Cleveland Heights's costs.
Council Sheets.
I just want to say Director Gonzalez had the foresight to uh tell the lifeguards at Cumberland at the end of the season. We may be needing you and uh our aquatics director also agreed to be the supervisor. Whereas usually he, it's a he, right? Chief, sorry, I didn't even know, never met, never met the person, but she um. Uh you you know, is usually a seasonal employee, but she agreed to do the supervising of the lifeguards in this other season, we'll call it.
Council Sheets.
Oh, um so if I read the legislation, right, it was seventy five, it was a seventy five twenty five split as far as maintenance go. Now that there's a third party, party, will that reduce our uh portion of liability as far as maintenance?
Yes.
So the maintenance costs are, oh, I'm sorry.
Um the third party is is really, um I mean, i- if you're, are you saying the third party, University Heights or the third party of the school district?
School district.
The school district, I mean, they're they're supplying uh the maintenance of the pool at at no charge. And security and, you know, access to the building, custodial um services. So that's their kind of, yes.
Okay, so so we remain at the seventy five twenty five split?
Yeah, but that's really just for the lifeguards and the aquatics supervisor. Is that the title supervisor?
Council Maddox.
The only feedback I I I've been receiving about this, some of the parents are uncomfortable in terms of the public being in and out. Could you walk through just not the security process, but how that'll work in terms of access to the pool versus the rest of the building? Cause I've been talked about it all. I know something that parents keep asking me about in terms of how that will work. And I don't know between our organization or the school district, but it's definitely something we want to share as as a part of this. Uh but that that's the only feedback that I got is how how, what's the process for that to make sure that there's no overlap um with all the incidents happening?
If you don't mind, so when we fully execute the contract and we're ready to go, we're gonna release to the public. Because the school has specific entrances that they want us to use for the pool. Yeah, separate entrance that goes directly pretty much to the pool. So those are the entrances that we're gonna be using in and out of the pool. Um and with the custodians that are already there and stuff like that, because we're gonna be using it early in the morning, the custodians will be on site. You know, not wandering, those parts of the building will be closed off until school starts, they'll be opening doors and different things like that.
That that was a question I got is would that be closed off? Or be, some parents were saying it's wide open now and pay uh are coming in earlier. Okay, so that that was just a question I had. Folks can go up.
Okay. And and also our staff, we're gonna make sure that that the building and the pool is fully staffed enough. Where we're not just gonna have lifeguards there, we're gonna have people to kind of guide, make sure people aren't wandering around and different things like that. So we're doing our portion so we can maintain a good relationship with the schools.
Thank you. That that's the number one question I've got. I'm so glad people could hear that tonight. That was just a concern I kept getting over and over again, is how are we stopping people from from that? So thank you for that.
I would just mention it's a slightly related issue that the contract as it's currently drafted. Um provides that anyone engaged by the cities, whether it's an employee, an independent contractor, et cetera, to be present at the pool. At the city's behest, is subject to fingerprinting and a BCI criminal background check. And that's kept on file for two years. The schools were insistent on that.
That was the other question. Thank you for that. The other question I got is, is the school taking any part in that to make sure that it's the same safety level of safety for staff? So thank you.
Anybody else on that particular issue? Alright, ordinance number two seventeen dash twenty twenty five. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with California Skate Parks with the Kane Park Skate Park Renovation Project. Any discussion? Council Petras.
Um so I know that this federal grant was announced over a year ago. Is there any time period within which we have to spend it?
We we have until next October to spend it.
Okay.
So the award, the award was given to us um in September of this year and we have basically one full year. I think they give us a year and some change. So I think they're giving us all the way till next October to s- to spend it.
Okay, great.
But these things take take time, obviously. So we wanted to get the ball rolling now because there's a lot of process. They're gonna do public feedback, they're gonna get engagement with the community, different things like that, cause it's gonna be a design build. It's not just gonna be, we're gonna pick one out of the uh, you know, a book and this is the one we want. It's going to be customized and tailored to what our residents want.
Great, thank you.
Good question.
Council Cobb.
Um so the grant that we got is three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And um looking at what we're gonna spend for the skate park, which is six eighty. And then approximately a hundred thousand dollars um for the resurfacing of the tennis courts. Where is the um remaining money coming from? Is that from ARPA dollars that we already allocated or are we?
So three hundred ninety thousand dollars was appropriated in the twenty twenty five budget for this project. I think two meetings ago, council approved the additional three hundred ninety thousand dollars to cover the difference. So that was, I think it was two meetings ago. Yeah. Something like that. So that's between the three ninety that we had appropriated at the beginning of the year. And then the budget adjustment of three ninety that that council approved a couple of meetings ago, that equals the seven eighty.
Thank you.
Oh, that's where my.
Vice President Russell.
That's where my question came from with the the lines, where the lines uh going to remain the same or updating the designs of the lines. And then the the um. The reimbursement, is the city paying for it totally and then we're getting reimbursement?
Yes, so as we spend money, we can submit for reimbursement.
Okay.
Up to up to three hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, alright.
Anybody else? Um first readings only, resolution number two fourteen dash twenty twenty five. A resolution authorizing a grant agreement with the Noble Area Business Association. Um we do not have an agreement yet. Our, is that on the way?
Yeah, we have a draft agreement that was sort of finalized as of this afternoon, not a not a long time prior to this meeting. Um that we can um send over to uh to Myra Orenstein and um and circulate for council if if council wants to see it now. It is a. council. If, if council wants to see it now, it is a work in progress. There's some additional tightening up and some discussion to take place, but it's based upon some of the grant agreement formats that were utilized last year with nonprofit, um, grants that the city, uh, provided. And it includes, um, some, you know, procurement requirements. They do have in place now at, at least a draft procurement policy, a code of regulations and bylaws, a conflict of interest policy. Um, so those things are, are, th- those are all within the last several days. So those are, those pieces are coming into place. Um, and, you know, the agreement in particular is directed to ensuring that all the funds are used for a proper public purpose so that there's no question about the ability of the city to expend them. And then it's gonna be on a, um, working capital, uh, advanced basis, which again was utilized with, um, a lot of the nonprofits last year, which means that sort of a rolling process, um, of an initial, uh, expenditure. And then as that's spent down and evidence of the expenditures are provided to the city, additional funds are dispersed. Um, so we think that it, that it addresses the situation. There is a little bit of work still to be done on it. Um, and, and the exhibits are largely put together, you know, we know where the district is. Um, we would have, uh, again, the policies, uh, as they may be revised that they've come up with, um, all as exhibits to the agreement. And then there's a project scope, uh, exhibit as well.
I'm leaning towards assigning this and I wanted to ask you, Vice President Russell. This initiative came out of your committee, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying not to be redundant, but I'm wondering if now that everything's finalized and we would have an agreement, if it would be appropriate to have it go back to your committee just for one more meeting to look at the documents altogether, the whole scope of it?
I think they will be totally offended because we've had it in our committee twice. Um, I think that, um, I think, so let me ask a question first. Could we pass this legislation and still work on the, the little details that need to be worked on and then bring that piece back to our committee? Or basically it's really just a, no, I don't need to, it, it doesn't need, actually, I don't think it needs to come back to the committee because everything that they need is from a, um, a contracts standpoint.
Yeah.
That you, that you would be writing for any other nonprofit.
Yeah.
So I think anything outside of that would actually be for the law department, not coming back towards our committee.
Well, except then that leaves it to the law department if things don't get worked out to say, sorry, uh, no sale, right? And, and I don't know that that's necessarily a position we wanna be in. But it, but it could be, um, authorized tonight and that's the way the legislation is set up to be finalized through additional discussions with, uh, between the city, uh, represented by law and economic development, um, and NABA. Um, and if those issues, and most of them are smallish, um, but some of them are pretty important and we do need to get those worked out.
Yeah.
That, that could be done.
Okay, I, I can agree to that.
So what did you just agree to?
I was listening, but I wanna know what you think it is. Moving this legislation forward, but then working on, uh, the additional information that he needs and then working it through the, um, uh, the law department and maybe the committee? Or not the committee, no. Cause I know you don't wanna be the fall guy if it doesn't work.
Yeah, I mean, we could, certainly you could. So the committee's, uh, authority is to make recommendations to council, so I'm not sure that that really works.
So we are, we don't, so we don't, I don't think, I, that's why, I didn't think we need to go.
Yeah, the ideal scenario would be that it waits one more meeting. Um, and, and in any case, even if it's authorized tonight by council adopting the legislation, they're not gonna be able to sign any contracts tonight or in the next week or so, um, on the basis of that authorization. Um, cause it's, it's just not gonna be.
No, I understand, but we've worked through things like that.
But, but I think that, yeah, we had a meeting, uh, ten days ago or so, um, productive. A lot of information came in last week. Um, that conversation continued and over the weekend, um, the draft was put together. So it's, it's moving forward.
Councilor Maddox?
You don't, you don't think it's worth it at all, bringing it back once it's, it's done so they can see the, the clean version? Because I think if we pass it tonight, there might be assumptions about what we're passing when we're in the middle of that process. And I'd rather both, they feel secure about that and the public know exactly what, so bringing it back to us, us to see that, that clean version.
Well, that's, well, that's not to the committee.
So you would just rather go back to the whole committee, the whole to do it, to?
Yeah. Yeah, because it's been in committee twice. So, and we've, we've, we've voted it out of committee.
Then you would just send it back here anyway.
Right.
So we could do, asking our questions of Director Hannah. Would that be appropriate if we have questions between now and November third? Treat it as first read only tonight.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's fine. And we'll always, uh, you know, engage if somebody has questions. Um, but I think our principal efforts are gonna be directed at, um, working with, with Myra and NABA to get the information and make sure that this works. There's a couple items that are flagged as for discussion. There's some others that are just kind of blank. There's some comments we need to provide on the proposed policies, things of that nature.
Councilor Maddox?
There's still discussions about maybe expanding the scope of who was in that association. I know that, that there was conversation with some folks.
We have questions.
And, and, yeah, that, that was my concern, just making sure that there was time to discuss that if it.
Yeah, so please get your questions formulated. If you can send them to Director Hannah in the meantime between now and November third. If you have any questions for me or, um, anybody on the, on the committee, the planning and development committee. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I don't think the, the committee plays such a role at this point as, as the vice president said for those reasons.
All right, yeah.
But, and also if you do send questions, uh, to, to Chris and me, um, and I would ask that you copy economic development because there are some questions about what kind of metrics are gonna be utilized to evaluate, you know, progress and, and, and success. Um, but don't copy other council members, just send them to us so that we don't create any open meetings act issues.
All right.
I, I do know we didn't address their sense of urgency. Is there any other plan B we have for the snowplowing that we, we can possibly do from a legal standpoint? If that's the only reason they needed to have it done. I didn't know if there was something possible, but I didn't wanna ignore the fact that they're stating that's one of the reasons why, because it doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem.
Right.
I don't know legally, and I, 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 I think someone brought this, I think it was Councilman, uh, Cobb, you even asked that question in terms of what we were doing.
Well, that's a question. I mean, if the urgency is the snowplowing contract, can the city sign a contract for snowplowing? With a, with a vendor?
I mean theoretically, sure.
Because the amount would be, I think the amount was well under whatever needed to come to city council for approval.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if, I mean, if that's the concern in the urgency that they need to get a contract done for snowplowing.
So through next Wednesday, um, weather bug says that, uh, the lowest temperature that should occur is forty degrees. So I, so then you're like, you know, a few days away from the meeting. I guess it's a little bit of a hope and a prayer, but, um, presumably there's time to get that worked out and, and then under, I don't remember what the amount of the projected snowplowing expense was.
Fifty-six hundred.
How much?
Fifty-six hundred.
Okay, so, so as currently drafted, the agreement would ask them to get three quotes. So I think, you know, it's, it wouldn't be ideal to have a, um, a snowplowing contract executed on the one, um, in any event.
But could we, because that is an urgent.
They could get quotes in advance.
Is that a, because it's, that's what they're saying, that's the urgency of it. Couldn't the city, couldn't they get three quotes? The city say we will take care of the, um, the bill for that and then maybe, and then subtract it out. Yeah, so adjust the budget.
Is everybody in, are we looking at, I see nodding heads or happy faces?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure with, with timing, with contracts and things like that, uh, commercial contracts, that's all.
They're all due about now. They're all due about now.
I just didn't want them to take a hit with that, but it makes sense, especially if they still have to get those three quotes, which just makes a lot of sense.
Mm-hmm. All right, so maybe I can call on Director Hannah briefly when we're in committee during discussion to talk about that possibility, give them something to hold on to on November third. Um, I made a mistake and I, and not by sliding, did not mean to slide. Resolution number two twelve dash twenty twenty five. Resolution authorizing the purchase of two twenty twenty six Ford Transit cargo vans from Classic Ford to Madison for the Parks and Rec Department. So does anybody have any discussion on that? We're good?
I'll send it someplace. No, not gonna do it. Almost.
Okay, okay.
By the time we start talking about the fleets, I go off.
I know, you really do.
It's your favorite topic. It's a favorite topic. Um, so at this point, we have left to read the consent agenda, resolution recognize, uh, two fifteen dash twenty twenty five, resolution recognizing October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five as Climate Action Day in the city of Cleveland Heights. And the, um,
Small Business Saturday.
Small Business Saturday.
Which is two sixteen.
That's pushing me along. I can see the, uh, the resolution is two sixteen, two fifteen dash twenty twenty, two sixteen, a resolution declaring November twenty ninth Small Business Saturday, which is really important. So, um, that's all I have in legislative review. Mayor Coode, did you wanna say anything about the arts commission?
I mean, I would love to see it get going and you know how I feel about it. I think this should be reconstituted as a council committee. And, uh, I think there's, um, you know, plenty of work for people to do. I think the seven of you, I know Pasha's in here, would be great at recruiting people to, to staff that committee, um, you know, programming for, performing arts stuff, that'd be a great role for them. Uh, murals, visual arts, you know, as it revisit, um, pertains to planning, uh, you know, buildings, new and old. Um, you know, business district, um, visuals, uh, this, this could be a great thing. It's, you know, somebody wants to take the bull by the horns and.
I'll, I'll be glad to take a stab at drafting if there's some consensus to.
Cause you would be changing it from the mayor appoints to council appoints. Right?
Right.
Yeah. I, I'm fine with that.
Cause we don't, we are not even close to having a full complement, are we?
It, it's, it, it's nine, um, what, is it nine or eleven? I think it's eleven members, eleven. Two have been appointed in like a year and a half. I mean, come on.
Councilor Petras, you have a question?
Just wondering how many folks have been appointed looking back through legislation? It looks like three.
Uh, two, I think.
Deidre McPherson, Nathan Mata and Tony Sias.
Oh, I didn't know about that one.
And so it would be great if we could maybe reach out to them, let them know that something isn't the worst. I think that they've just been waiting for a year.
All right, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, um, city of the whole at seven thirty-five and we head into our public and all the different things that are ahead of us this evening. So thank you all.